Good evening, everyone. I have a bit of a cold, so pardon me if I’m sniffling a little bit. But we are here at our regular city council meeting for February 20th. And a little after 6:00. Can we get roll call, please?
This isn’t...
Hmm. Can you check this?
Not recording.
Yeah, but nothing’s on.
It’s not recording.
Sorry, my life. My throat hurts, oh.
And that’s just not because you’re tired.
No.
Okay, as long as it’s being recorded, good.
All right. All right. Mayor Didball? Yes. Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Councilman Buckland?
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza?
Here.
Councilmember Cleveland?
Here.
He says it’s booming back there. Okay, thank you. We are going to have Councilmember Buckland lead us in the invocation, and we will have Councilmember Cardoza lead us in the pledge today.
If you’ll bow your heads as I pray. Almighty Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of those that are gathered here tonight. We’re truly blessed by your presence. We ask for your guidance and a clear vision so the efforts of staff and council be of benefit to those that live and work in our great community. It’s in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, we have a couple of presentations and proclamations. We have our first one. It’s the Police Life Saving Award, and it is for Officer Joshua Jackson. So if we can have Officer Jackson step up, and we have our Chief Langdon.
Josh, right here. First of all, I’d like to thank the Council Mayor Didball for letting us do this in front of you today. We get to honor our Officer Josh Jackson for a life-saving medal. Along with the officers, we always like to introduce and have the family come up if they would.
Yes.
His wife, Lisa, his son, A.J., and your youngest daughter, Lauren. Commander Tappy is going to read this proclamation or the citation.
On November 20th of 2017 at 4:57 PM, Uba City Police Officers were dispatched to the south side of the Uba Center Mall for an adult female who was acting suspicious, possibly mentally ill. Officer Jackson arrived in the area and located the female, matching the description of a similar call from earlier that day. Officer Jackson attempted to contact the female and engage her in conversation. The female began walking away towards the busy traffic lanes of Colusa Highway. As Officer Jackson updated his location over the radio, the female broke into a full sprint and entered the eastbound traffic lanes of the highway. Without hesitation, Officer Jackson ran after the female and tackled her as she crossed into the traffic lanes. Several approaching vehicles swerved to avoid colliding with Officer Jackson and the female as they passed by. Two vehicles stopped and blocked additional oncoming traffic. Officer Jackson pulled the female out of the traffic lanes and took her into custody for a mental health evaluation. The female told Officer Jackson she ran into the busy highway to change her life. Officer Jackson, at risk to his own life, prevented the female from suffering serious injury and possible death. His actions reflect selflessness, professionalism, and dedication to his duty as a peace officer, and are in keeping with the highest standards of police service. It is hereby ordered Officer Jackson be awarded the Uba City Police Department’s Life Saving Medal for his actions on November 20, 2017.
On behalf of the City of Uba City, the family, the men and women of the Uba City Police Department, we want to award you the Life Saving Medal.
Thank you, Officer Jackson. And thank you for all of you for your service to our city.
They’re not staying?
They’re not going to stay. All right. Next, we have the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency Annual Report, and the presentation is going to be done by Mike, the Executive Director.
Okay. Thank you, members of the council, for this opportunity to update the City of Uba City on levy projects in the Sutter Butte Basin. Again, my name’s Mikey Namine. I’m the Executive Director of the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency. So I’ve updated the council relatively recently as a result of last year’s rather exciting year. So I’m going to just sort of hit on the highlights. So don’t be put off by all the words on this. I’ll be skipping through a number of these slides. So I’ll provide a little bit of background, some of the current projects that we’re working on, some new projects that we’re working on. I’d like to focus a lot of attention on the Sutter Basin Flood Risk Management Project. That’s basically bureaucracies for the federal project that we anticipate starting this year, and then ongoing and future work. So you’ve seen this slide many times. The Subufka Goals haven’t changed since 2010, 200-year protection for the urbanized areas in the north, 100-year protection or equivalent for remainder of the basin to the south. We have a strategic plan that’s posted on the website with more details. This is a slide that shows the current projects and completed projects that Subufka has embarked on or has completed, and then some state and federal projects that you’re going to be hearing about in the coming year. So I’m just going to go through these very quickly. Of course, sort of the big dog in the room is the Feather River West Levy Project. That’s a roughly $300 million project that extends from Thermolito-After Bay in the north to Starbend in the south. It’s an fix-and-place levy repair consisting primarily of slurry walls, which I presented to the council previously. Another project you’re going to be hearing about that we anticipate starting, assuming that FERC and the Corps of Engineers are agreeable, is the Orville Wildlife Area. That’s about a $20 million project that provides additional transitory storage for the Feather River. That’s just a way of lowering flood stage on the west side of the river by providing more room for the river to move. The most recent project, of course, was the Uba City Emergency Levy Repair. That was not originally scoped for the big Feather River West Levy Project, and it was done as an emergencies contract. That work has largely been completed with a few odds and ends. And finally, in the south is the Laurel Avenue Levy Repair. It’s a one-mile critical repair that was just completed at the end of last year. Now, the state and federal projects that I briefed the council on before are a number of emergency repairs. These are projects that were carried out by the state of California, an erosion repair right near the Fifth Street Bridge that many folks saw, in addition to Subufka’s efforts on the other side of the levy through downtown Uba City, as well as erosion repairs further south down by Laurel Avenue. Many of those rock repairs that you saw, that rock is going to stay in place for the long term, and the state is in the process of making it a permanent fixture for future levy protection, all the way down to the 99 Bridge. The big project that you’re going to be hearing more about and that’s received some attention in Washington, D.C. is the Sutter Basin Flood Risk Management Project. So don’t be put off the words. I’m not going to read all of these. Basically, when we get money from the state of California to build projects, we call them state-local projects. State and Subufka pool their money, and they build things like the Feather River West Levy Project that is essentially completed from Thermolito-After Bay in the north to Starbend in the south. And then there’s a small repair, relatively small repair, down in the south. Again, a state-local project that was completed at Laurel Avenue. The state doesn’t just sort of hand out this money and say, you know, do good things, because this is work that’s normally done by the federal government. It’s normally done by the Corps of Engineers. And of course, many years ago, about 10 years ago, when the bonds were passed, the state said, “We can’t wait. We’re going to fund local agencies like Subufka, like SAFKA, like West Sacramento and others to advance these projects.” But in exchange for that, we partner with the Corps of Engineers to make sure that we, Subufka and the federal government, get credit for doing essentially what the federal government does. Now, we are running down to the sort of the end of our funding, state-local funding. We’ve now completed, with state-local funding, essentially 88% of what would normally be a federal project. So 88% of traditionally the federal government’s share of work has been completed, leaving a very modest investment by the federal government of $50 million bucks for a $77 million project to finish the job. And so this entire project has been authorized by the federal government, but of course, it doesn’t get built until appropriations take place. And so we’re eagerly awaiting for the federal government to get a budget in place, and we’ve been doing a lot of lobbying in D.C. over these past several months. And if there is a silver lining to what happened at Orville, if there is a silver lining to the, you know, much of the duress associated with that event, the high water, it is that our community has gotten a lot of attention from the federal government to fix this and get it done very quickly. So we are hopeful that come the end of the federal fiscal year, we’ll see an appropriation to finish this work and have the Corps of Engineers invest in the project that the state so far is not willing to fund. This is about five miles. It extends from the southern end of Starbend, roughly about Tudor Road, down to the north end of the Laurel Avenue project we just completed, roughly Cypress Avenue, if you know where that is. It’s about, again, it’s about $77 million worth of work. Federal government is expected to come up with about $50 million worth of it. The balance will be cost shared with state and Subufka. I’m not going to say too much about this, but the repairs that you’re going to see in the federal project are just like the repairs that we’ve been doing for the past four years. It’s primarily deep under seepage. There are some other repairs, but it’s primarily deep under seepage, and we’ll be, Corps of Engineers will be constructing slurry wall, just like the slurry wall that Subufka has been installing these past couple of years. So what is the ongoing work? What’s happening right now? So there is essentially all of the work on the Feather River West Levy Project, all the major construction is done. That’s the big $300 million project. The Laurel Avenue is completed, reaches 14 through 16 through downtown Uba City are essentially completed, but there’s still some closeout work that folks are going to be asking you about. And this includes some project closeout activities, and this is primarily concerned with right-of-way for the, what we call the gap projects. This is around UPRR, the railroad. We have some relief wells down south in primarily rural area. At Laurel Avenue, that work is pretty much completed. You’re not going to see any activities associated with that. Now, the Uba City levy repairs, we still have some work to do to replace some stairs. You’re going to see some stump removals taking place over the winter. We’re doing some welding on some pipes at Gilseizer Slough to affect stormwater drainage. And then, depending on how the weather is over the next several months, we’ll be doing some paving. We have a levy fencing contract for all of these areas that we’re going to be putting out to bid by the end of the month. But as the list denotes, it’s pretty much all the heavy civil construction is largely completed. So, future work, and this should be my last slide, is the Orville Wildlife Area Flood Stage Reduction Project. That’s about a $20 million job. We have some hangups with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, ironically, because the project mitigates issues associated with Orville Dam, and we have some issues with a Core 408 permit, which we don’t believe this is worthy of, but nonetheless, we’re going through that process. We have a DWR Small Communities Grant. That is a feasibility study for everything south of Uba City to improve flood protection for all those areas that have not seen the bulk of the money with regard to levy repairs. I talked about the Sutter Basin Flood Risk Management Project. The one thing I want to point out is that this federal project is highly competitive. The Corps of Engineers is billions of dollars behind, is a backlog. So there are literally hundreds of projects lined up to get a few new starts for construction, and we’re one of this hundred or so projects. So in order for us to be competitive, we’re doing a lot of the work that the Corps would normally do, like the design and permitting, so that we can raise our hands and we say, “Well, who’s ready to go? Who’s ready to go to construction? We can be that project.” We’re working with Sutter County, Butte County on the remapping. Once the projects are completed, maps will be changed for, the FEMA maps will be changed. These are the flood maps that dictate sort of terms and conditions for flood insurance rates. I’m not going to talk too much about resource conservation investment strategy, but that’s a way of reducing our costs for the federal project, and there’s some miscellaneous closeout activities. Most notably is right-of-way. We’re acquiring right-of-way for the federal project. So there’s a lot of activity associated with that, and getting accroachment agreements for all the work that’s been completed. So that’s my last slide. This is some public information and some places to get additional detail on Subufka activities. Encourage everybody to attend the Subufka Board meetings, particularly over the next couple of months as we hopefully initiate work on the federal project. And with that, if there are any questions, be happy to respond.
Thank you, Mike. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Nope. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a couple of ordinances on our agenda. We have an expedited permitting procedure for the electric vehicle charging stations pursuant Assembly Bill 1236. Do you have a staff report?
Mayor, members of the city council, Arnold Rodriguez, Development Services Department. The item before you is a proposal to add a new section to the city’s municipal code, specifically to... to Chapter 17, Title VII. So about a year and a half ago, the state assembly passed Assembly Bill 1236 that mandates that cities with a population of less than 200,000 take specific measures to streamline the approval processes for electric vehicle charging stations, both at residential and commercial sites. So typically, when the city mandates modifications in terms of the building permit process, they’ll typically house those as part of the California Building Code. However, in this particular case, the state said, “Local jurisdictions, you have to adopt it separately.” With that being said, even if the city council took no action on this item, we would still have to comply with the Assembly Bill anyways. So rather than do that, we simply thought that it would be best that we adopted the pertinent language. So in terms of how we currently process applications, we currently expedite these. Unfortunately, we haven’t had a lot of requests in the past five years. From speaking with my colleagues, we can think of three times that this would have applied. But even with that being said, we can feel that we have a relatively streamlined process here, specifically when it comes to this. One of the things that we request that applicants bring forward to the city is the specifications provided by the manufacturer. We simply take them, we stamp them, and we let them go, because they are fairly straightforward in terms of processing here at the city. So in terms of local impact, again, we don’t believe that this is a huge impact for us. If anything, it simply reinforces the fact that we do try to streamline the application process. In terms of the day-to-day operations, it’s the same fee that they would have paid last week is the same fee. So there’s no proposal at this point to increase fees, to modify really anything. And again, because we receive such a low volume of these applications, there’s no real impact to the city. So with that being said, we are recommending this evening that we are introducing the modification, and we’re requesting that the city council waive the first reading of the ordinance this evening, and then we’ll be coming back at the next city council meeting for formal adoption. So with that being said, that concludes staff’s presentation.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or a motion to move forward? I’m sorry?
It was very clear.
Yes.
With that, I’ll move to the recommended action. A, concur with the determination that the text amendment does not constitute a project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Code Act, and introduce the ordinance adding Title VII, Chapter 17, to the municipal code relating to expediting permitting procedures for electric vehicle charging stations, and waive the first reading.
I’ll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express their opinions of the group. So do we have any? Okay, we have written requests. Members of the public submitting those written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allocated five minutes to speak. And then appearance of interested citizens, so we do have a card on that. Members of the public may address the city council on items of interest that are within the city’s jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. So we have Henry Estrada.
My name is Henry Estrada. My wife called me as I was working, and I got cited for my toy hauler. This is in front of my house, not in front of my house, but on my property. And I live on Parkview Avenue, Holly Tree Parkview, Manzanita. Those houses were built in the 70s and 80s, and they don’t have any access to behind the fence. And about every fifth house has a trailer or a vacation trailer in front of it in their property. So my neighbor across Caddy Corner, last year when he moved in, somebody complained about their three-wheeler being in front. He lives in the corner, doesn’t have much space. He just told the people, “If you want to pay my rent to have mine stored, you’re more than happy. Go for it.” But he can’t afford it. But he goes, he uses it quite a bit, as well as I do. So there’s nothing in my property that I can put my travel trailer through the fence in the backyard. Those houses were not made for it, even though it was annexed to the city. And I was working, and down Ollister, a humongous, real nice fancy bus, travel bus, was just like my trailer. So there’s a lot of sightings should be done, if not just me and my neighbor. And I did talk to somebody else. They didn’t get cited, so I don’t know what’s going on. I just, this is my first time meeting, so the houses aren’t, maybe every fifth house has maybe space to put a trailer in it, but that’s it. So I just thought I’d let you, I just kind of went on those things, like, “Really?” Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we’ve already gotten your question.
Yeah, that’s what I was going to say. Henry, what we’ll do is we’ll have one of our staff members contact you to discuss it. We’ll have Mr. Rodriguez give you a call, so the two of you guys can go over the situation. No, Mr. Estrada.
I’m sorry?
Thought you looked a little busy there. We’ll have one of our staff members, Mr. Rodriguez, go ahead and contact you so that you can talk to him directly and get clarification on what you can do. Okay. All right. Next, we have our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time council votes on the motion unless members of city council staff or public... events, the eatery areas like on Pluma Street that have been permitted by ABC, or other events or functions that have gained a permit from the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. It is staff's recommendation that council introduce an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 6 of Title V of the municipal code, and waive the first reading. And I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. Bring it back to the council for any questions or a motion.
I have a question. Yeah, Brian, so you got a few fellows that worked a hard day at work. They decide to grab a six-pack of beer, and let's say they're Walmart parking lot. Let's say, let's just pick Walmart. They all meet at the Walmart parking lot, and they get a six-pack of beer and have a six-pack of beer before they go home. That's going to be null and void now? Can't do that anymore? That's what, is what we're passing?
That's always been a violation of the Business and Professions Code.
Oh, it has.
However, it gets a little cumbersome to, you throw out Walmart. I mentioned in the staff report, a convenience store, but Walmart being in a retail shopping center, they're an off-sale premise. So, if an off-sale premise is operated, say, on their own individual piece of property, the Business and Professions Codes is really easy. You can't consume an alcoholic beverage on the premise of an off-sale retailer. Whereas Walmart, technically, it gets into the, kind of the weeds as to where their property ends, and say where Bed Bath &amp; Beyond begins, or Michael's, or Famous Footwear, or any of those places over there. This just kind of tightens that up a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Through the mayor. And Brian, I should say Lieutenant Baker, kind of getting into what the enforcement aspects of the Business and Professions Code, that most of that's administrative against the licensee or the seller of the product if they are allowing people on their property to consume?
That is correct.
Okay, so this now, this ordinance would put it on the responsible party, those that choose to come onto a property and break the law. They could be prosecuted individually, correct?
Yes, it puts the onus on the law violator, not the business, for something that they don't know what's going on.
Thank you.
Okay, anything?
Through the mayor. I'll make staff's recommendation.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great, thank you. Okay, next we have public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments that are controversial, on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express their opinions of the group. So, do we have any? Okay, we have written requests. Members of the public submitting those written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allocated five minutes to speak. And then appearance of interested citizens, so we do have a card on that. Members of the public may address the City Council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. So we have Henry Estrada.
Good evening. My name is Henry Estrada. My wife called me as I was working, and I got cited for my toy hauler. My, this is in front of my house, not in front of my house, but on my property. And I live on Parkview Avenue, Holly Tree Parkview, Manzanita. Those houses were built in the 70s and 80s, and they don't have any access to behind the fence. And about every fifth house has a trailer or a vacation trailer in front of it, in their property. So, my neighbor across Catty Corner, last year when he moved in, somebody complained about their three-wheeler being in front. He lives in the corner, doesn't have much space. He just told the people, "If you want to pay my rent to have mine stored, you're more than happy. Go for it." But he can't afford it. But he's got his, he goes, he uses it quite a bit, as well as I do. So, there's nothing in my property that I can put my travel trailer through the fence in the backyard. Those houses were not made for it, even though it was annexed to the city. And I was working, and down Oles Street, a humongous, real nice fancy bus, travel bus, was just like my trailer. So, there's a lot of sightings should be done, if not just me and my neighbor. And I did talk to somebody else, they didn't get cited, so I don't know what's going on. I just, this is my first time meeting, so the houses aren't, maybe every fifth house has maybe space to put a trailer in it, but that's it. So, I just thought I'd let you, I just kind of went on those things, like, really? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we've already gotten your question. Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Henry, what we'll do is we'll have one of our staff members contact you to discuss it. We'll have Mr. Rodriguez give you a call, so the two of you guys can go over the situation. No, Mr. Estrada?
Sorry?
Thought you looked a little busy there. We'll have one of our staff members, Mr. Rodriguez, go ahead and contact you so that you can talk to him directly and get clarification on what you can do, okay? All right, next we have our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time council votes on the motion unless members of City Council staff or public interest have particular items that they would like to have discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action.
Through the mayor, through the mayor?
Yes.
We need to remove, hold on a second. Number seven.
Number seven, minutes?
Yes.
All right. How about items eight through?
Through the mayor, goes staff's recommendation, eight through 11.
Okay.
Consent calendar.
All right, all in motion, or all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Good? Okay, and we can go ahead and discuss the minutes? Was there something on the minutes?
I wasn't here.
Oh, okay. Probably just want to make a notation on that.
On the minutes, mayor?
Move to approve the item number seven.
Okay, and all in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye. Or abstain, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I got a little ahead of myself, sorry. Abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Abstain.
All right. We're good there now. Okay, we're going to move to our general items. We have Police Officers Association, MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, and Police Sergeants' Letter of Understanding, LOU. We have Natalie Springer.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Tonight, I am presenting the Police Officers Association's Memorandum of Understanding and the Police Sergeants' Letter of Understanding for your consideration and hopeful approval. I'd like to first begin by providing you some background about the last agreement that expired June 30th, 2017. On this slide, it shows the notable items from the last agreement, which has been in operation since the expiration of June 30, 2017. This was the agreement that eliminated the furlough program and transitioned in employees paying towards their retirement benefits. There was also ongoing and one-time money included in this agreement. As for the new agreement, Police Officers Association and the Police Sergeants in the city started meeting April, in April of 2017. We've met up until this point, where we came to some terms that we were ready to initiate an agreement. These are some of the terms, there are two slides here of terms. We've put Police Officers Association and Police Sergeants on, together in this series here. But there are a couple of things I want to point out. This contract is for two years, so expires June 30th, 2019. There is both one-time and ongoing money in this contract, and I think most notably there's increases in ancillary pays. An example of this is the field training officer pay. So, in the police sergeants, it was added, and the police officers, it was extended and increased. So that's an example of the ancillary pay that I'm referring to. And in this chart, you can see, last line there includes the field training, includes detective and field training officer ancillary pay for the police sergeants. As a result of these negotiated terms, a supplemental appropriation is required, which is part of the approval for the MOU and the LOU. But this time, I would ask that you approve a resolution, two-year resolution for the MOU for the Police Officers Association and a letter of understanding with the police sergeants and the appropriate supplemental appropriation. I will take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Natalie. Any questions for Natalie from the council? No?
Through the mayor.
Uh huh.
Staff's recommendation, A, B, and C.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you, Natalie. Next, we have the Executive Service Employee Contract Amendment. We have City Manager Steve Craig.
Yes, good evening, and my apologies for the amplification not working this evening. I've confirmed with Dave that the microphones are picking this up perfectly in the back. So if anyone wants to watch this later, they'll have the benefit of hearing everything perfectly. Luckily, we have acoustics in here that benefit the situation. So, these are your executive service employees. You have nine executive service employees as outlined in the staff report. These individuals are at-will employees, generally department heads and individuals in the city manager's office, including the assistant to the city manager and the public affairs and economic growth manager. The proposed changes to the contracts existing are listed before you. They do run parallel to the agreements that are generally being presented to your council for the other groups, inclusive of a 2% one-time distribution, and then in year two, a 2% salary adjustment. Also, adjustments being made to death benefit and the addition of a long-term disability program. The latter two, as they apply to many of the other groups, in varying amounts, depending upon salaries of different employees. What we try to do is look at other surrounding competitors to Yuba City, and we want to make sure that when we're attracting a pool of candidates, that we're offering a package, not just salary, but also the benefits, such as long-term disability, that benefit people who come here. And we identified the latter two as important, to attract the right people to Yuba City. That's it in a nutshell. There are certain appropriation adjustments that need to be made as well, that are listed in the staff report, specifically an adjustment of roughly $41,000 for the current year, and just shy of $50,000 for the next fiscal year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Steve. Coming back to the council, are there any questions or a motion?
Move to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Got that, Patricia? All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you. Next, we have our South Yuba City Annexation Election. We have Darren Gale presenting.
Good evening, Mayor Dibball and council members. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. Darren Gale, the Economic Growth and Public Affairs Manager, and I am the project manager on our South Yuba City annexation process, which is a number of years in the making. Tonight, I'm before you to, what's before you tonight is to approve, or a proposal for a resolution to initiate an election as part of the June primary election that would be held on June 5th of 2018, and to authorize the finance director to make a supplemental appropriation for $40,000. That is the item. That being stated, Mayor, if you would like, I could give a little bit additional background on the annexation for residents who might tune in this evening to watch.
I think that would be great, thank you.
So first, this is a map of the area. The area is in South Yuba City. The areas are, on the north side, that boundary is Franklin Road. On the south is Boge Road. And on the, on the west side, you have the Gil Sizer Slough and some areas that kind of are the boundaries, and on the east side, you know, it's a variety of streets. It's kind of mixed-match. I would actually say, as you drive in these areas, you don't really tell the difference if you're in the city or county. And part of that reason being is you'll actually see our city vehicles there, because we provide water service to any resident who has city service, who's not on a well. Additionally, we already provide these residents fire services. As I mentioned, the LAFCO process, we've gone through the process. They've, we've gotten to the point in May of 2017 to move forward with an election, and actually, here in January, they actually extended and gave us one additional year to move forward with an election, and we've brought forward the resolution for council's consideration tonight. Since that time, we've held numerous public meetings. We've heard concerns from residents. Unfortunately, many do not attend these meetings. We've had a very small, a small few, but one of the things that we would do if the council moved forward with an election, a portion of the funds that are being authorized or allocated for this process would be for some public outreach. And our job is to ensure residents have correct information. Unfortunately, there's a lot of false information out there, and we just want residents to be able to know exactly what the impacts of an annexation would be on their home, on their property, and then they get to make a determination if they think it's in their best interest or not. We actually held four different meetings. We held a couple before, but then we held four very specific to issues. The police departments, public works, planning, development services, administration, and public safety, so actually police and fire together. It's been over a year since we've held those meetings. We will continue to have a couple of outreach meetings to educate residents on the process and what impacts they would have. I'll go back, I know you can't read this, but on this brochure, it asks kind of those general questions that a resident might ask, like, is the city going to raise my property taxes? Actually, I usually don't hear the question. I'm usually told, "The city's going to raise my property taxes." That's not true. That cannot occur unless there is actually a vote of the people, and there would be no change. The question is related to public service or public safety. Will public safety be improved? And we definitely said there's, the Sheriff's Department does a really great job, but there are limited as relates to staffing. They have literally just a few deputies that are on in the evenings, that are patrolling all the way down to the Sacramento County border, all the way north to the Butte County border, a 608-square-mile area that they're servicing with literally three, and I've been told sometimes it's low as two deputies that are patrolling that area in the evenings. Whereas the city, currently, we have five police beats and a sergeant, so that would be six total officers actively patrolling a 15-square-mile ready, square-mile area versus three people trying to respond to calls on a 608-square-mile area. Other questions they get asked, "Am I going to have to connect to water and sewer?" No. It's the simple, easiest way. Actually, nothing changes as relates to your well and your sewer system. It's still, the Environmental Health Department at the county oversees that if you are in the city or in the county. So, this is a mailer that we've sent out, and I'm sure we'll send out more information so that people just have information so they can make a determination. So, why did the council move forward with this? I would say really it's about efficient use of government funds. The city nearly surrounds this entire area, and on three sides, and the city provides a full service around it, and it's, and it is an efficient use of dollars to provide all services to this area. There's been a lot of discussion about the Master Tax Exchange Agreement and reaching this 82% threshold. Even without that, it is still in the best interest, and dollars can be spent most efficiently by these residents being provided the full service of city services. What are those services? They're already being provided, like I said, fire, water, services, and some even have sewer connections. Obviously, law enforcement, building and planning, code enforcement, street maintenance, parks, and rec. And in this area, actually, the majority of properties are, they have a septic system, and they'll continue to be on that septic system. If that septic system fails, if they're in the city or not in the city, they would still have to go to the county environmental health department to actually permit a new section. I talked a little bit about the police department, our five beats. If this area would annex into the city of Yuba City, the city would add five new public safety staff. That'd be five sworn officers, one community service officer, and one dispatcher. That alone is a significant increase in public safety for this area. And not only would city residents benefit, I would actually state that that incorporated areas would see a benefit too, because they wouldn't have to respond to as many calls within the Walton area, the South Yuba City, and South Yuba City area, which would be taken over by the city. What are some of the community concerns? Some of them we can answer, some we can't. One of them is, "I just hate government. I hate, I hate city." I don't have a response for that. But we try to find out, what are the issues? What are the concerns that they might have? How, what's their fire service like? What's their water service? We've already talked about connecting a sewer, installing sidewalks. We will not be installing sidewalks. However, if they want to pay to install their own sidewalks, the city will help them through that process. The marijuana ordinance, there's actually been a state law that's been passed now. Our local codes are the same in the county or within the city. Burn piles, people say, "Well, I'm in a rural area. I'm able to have burn piles." There is no change. This is still overseen by our local air district, and burn piles are not allowed. Already talked about police services and raising my taxes. Code enforcement, the city is reactive to complaints as relates to code enforcement. Most of the codes are very, very similar. For example, the issue that Mr. Estrada brought up related to trailers is exactly the same in the county as it is, in that incorporated portions of the county, as it is in the city. What are some differences? Number one, the city has a business license. On average, most home-based businesses have a business license that's, or in the $50 range. If a business is located within this area and is doing business in the city, they should already have a business license, so there would be no change. That being said, this is something new. We've been very open and honest to let people know, if you have a home-based business, you need to make sure that you, that you have a business license. An alarm permit. Right now, in the city of Yuba City, we do have an alarm permit. It is for three years, and a round number is?
$42.
$42. The city of Yuba City, as part of this, would give the person their first alarm permit, which is three years, for free. They'd have to come in and apply for it, but that is a new cost to a residence. So the question is, well, why? Well, one of our number-one calls that our police department has is responding to bad, false alarms. And, and right now, as I talked with the deputy in the Sheriff's Department, he says, "We, we will respond to an alarm call, and we have no way of determining other than doing a visual check, and we go away, say, ah, well, it's a false alarm." In our, in our case, we actually are able to actually call the property owner, the person that the alarm is registered to, and to verify that something is not occurring in their home while they're away, because there are times that false alarms happen when, when people aren't there. Also, we have contact information for whoever is servicing their alarms. Farm animals, there are very similar ordinances as relates to that, as in that incorporated county as relates to this area in the city. You can't have roosters in the city, no hoofed animals. However, if someone already had it, for example, Mrs. Siller has horses within, right behind Honda, she'd be grandfathered in. She can maintain those horses and have them there, and it's one of the things we've actually talked to her about. And then, I would say one additional thing is currently under the contract that we have for solid waste as it relates to ecology. People that live, live in this area currently do not have to have garbage service. What does that mean? That means sometimes people just toss garbage over their, you know, backyard fence, and it becomes a code enforcement issue. In the city, it's actually required to have garbage pickup. So that is a change. I'm in that area. I've yet to talk to a resident that believes that that is actually a bad thing, that we require someone to have a garbage service. And then one of, and then I have on here Hun Road. There are residents along Hun Road who have a strong feeling that if they came into the city, Hun Road would be opened, and you would connect actually into the school, into St. Isidore's. That is not allowed. It's not, actually, the project, as it was, conditions of approval, it had to be closed. There is access, there's a gate there. We continue to work with the property owners as we, as, if we hear there are problems, and continue to work with the church whenever there are problems. One of the issues for the Hun Road folks, though, is they call and say, they call, they get picked up by dispatch, not city's dispatch, because they live in that incorporated portions of the county, and they're calling to complain about an issue in St. Isidore's. And there are times where there's slow responses as a result of the county not informing the city related to those issues. So, these are just a few concerns. I just wanted to at least bring them out there so that residents have an understanding that there are not going to be huge changes, but they should see improvements in some areas, public safety being really one of the keys. Again, if this area was to annex, the city of Yuba City would hire seven new public safety officers, which would be five sworn officers, a community service officer, and a... a dispatcher. At this time, I can answer any questions you might have. I do know that we have Bob Renton, who lives in Live Oak, who would love to talk about this item this evening.
Thank you, Darren. Any questions for Darren from council at this time? No? Okay. All right. We have a written request from Mr. Renton.
No. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Renton. I reside near Live Oak, and our family home since 1955 on Hun Road is now my property. And I have spent most of the last three months on Hun Road at that house. Now, I've heard Mr. Gale in the text of the comments for tonight indicate charges of misinformation. And I've been hearing that claim that we have been spreading misinformation to my neighbors about this annexation, that we tell people that they may have to hook up, that they will have to pick up to city water or city sewer. And I will swear to you, everyone here, that I have never done that. I have actually encountered some residents who feared that, so I tried my best to inform them that the city would not force them to hook up. Some remain convinced, so I asked them to contact Mr. Gale or the city. Now, if anyone has direct knowledge of this misinformation, I would like to have them give me enough information so that I can investigate. I've asked Mr. Gale, Mr. Gale has claimed several times that he had heard reports of misinformation, not directly, apparently. So he only would say that they came from Polora Avenue. That's the most detail I've ever gotten out of Mr. Gale. So I sent an email to all of our volunteers, asking them to stick to our published handout, and if anybody has any questions about city water or sewer, they should call the city. Excellent. Thank you. Now, regarding fire service and Yuba City's unrecovered cost to the service area G, service area G is the area outside Yuba City, and it includes the one square mile of the South Yuba City area annexation, proposed annexation. Now, I want to thank Chief Daley for this graphic. When he reported this to you two years ago, so this is slightly dated, the annex area or the keyhole area is circled in blue at the bottom, and it is, on an area basis, it's only 6% of your total unrecovered cost of the area, of the service area G cost, which I believe was in a range of $130,000. So 6%, I think I worked out to about $10,000. Now, regardless of how you look at it on an area basis or not, it's still a fairly small area, small percentage of your unrecovered cost. And now, Yuba City seems to want to annex their way out of this problem with this subsidy situation. This problem started in 2001 when Yuba City merged Walton Fire Department into Yuba City. This is a city management problem that has been going on for 17 years, and we will not be a whipping boy for the council on a problem that was created in 2001 by prior management, not blaming current management. The merger agreement called for a simple exchange of pro-rata property taxes, and that would have stayed, those taxes would have stayed with Sutter County, but they turned those over to you. That agreement has been provided to Yuba City staff, and they have had plenty of time to review it. Maybe they would like to comment. There will not be $1 increase in funds to Yuba City Fire Department if an annexation occurs. Only the city limit boundaries will change. So go ahead and waste another $40,000 of Yuba City taxpayer money. In the end, this effort will fail. Our volunteers contacted many of their neighbors and found overwhelming opposition. I have tracked all of those contacts over the last two years and maintain a database on my computer. The bottom line is very simple. If you want to provide Yuba City Police to the Walton area, you will need to change the trigger point in that tax agreement. Just meet with the county and renegotiate to the 70% trigger level. That's where you stand right now. Our opposition is already planning improvements for the next three months before any vote and any future annexation attempts. I thank the audience and the council for your time.
Would anybody else like to speak? Bring it back to the council. Any questions, any discussion, or a motion to move?
To the mayor. You know, when we start talking about service area G and city residents paying a dollar, a simple dollar more for someone else's coverage, that is a problem to me, regardless if it's only 6% or minimized, with some figure that is provided by Mr. Renton at $130,000 for the larger geographical area. I find it problematic in assuming that the residents of Yuba City owe this area any coverage. Whether it was the Walton merger or whatever, one of the things that I look at is simply undoing that. These areas, if they don't want city service, can go back to county services, county fire. You can get your fire trucks from Tudor. That's fine with me. If you want the city service, you're going to pay for the city service. And, you know, a vote on the whole issue, on this whole issue, is also bothersome to me, in the sense that property owners are left out of the equation on a large percentage of the properties that are under rent or being rented in this proposed annex area. To have the annexation be voted on by registered voters in that area tends to leave the property owners out. They get no say in this. So they have a rental. Their renter gets to decide whether they're in or out of the city. So from that fundamental standpoint, I have an issue with it. And when we look at the potential of service area G that Mr. Renton thinks he's owed for some reason from an agreement made years ago, if there was an increase or a push to increase an assessment through a ballot measure with the property owners, it would be the property owners deciding whether or not they were going to pay a higher assessment for their fire protection, which I believe they're obligated to do when they don't live within an area served by municipal services or contribute to those services in any other way than a reduced amount of money that doesn't cover all of the costs. And again, the citizens of Yuba City are responsible or have taken that on as a cost sharing with the residents in that area. So I have a big issue with the property owners in an annexation proposal not having a right. They're being disenfranchised by the process. But yet, if the choice were to be taken to not annex in, I'd be the first person saying, we need to get out of the service area G business of providing fire protection if they don't want to pay the full amount. And that vote would be done by the property owners. So I guess I'm really perplexed by how the system has gotten to this point when we look at our decision-making process that affects, truly affects, how property owners will respond, potential of being inside the city, whether it increases or decreases their property values, the other assets that they could have, access to the infrastructure should systems fail to increase maintenance of roadways. When Mr. Gale said that you can't tell the difference in many cases, driving down streets, I beg to differ. I live on a street that I enter it in the city. It's in great shape. There's a section three houses away from my house that goes into the county. That road surface is deteriorating at a greater degree than what the city streets are because the county has come in and done simple crack filling, where the city has actually done some cape ceiling to the roadways, to extend the life of the roadways. So I do take exception to some of that. The city residents are proud residents. They own, this is their city. This isn't the five of us and the city manager and Darren Gale or any elected official. This is a city residents' city. They get to choose how it's taken care of and how it's maintained, and I believe that they do a really good job of being participants in this fine city. Unfortunately, tonight, I stand on a firm resolution that while I support 100% an effort to annex this area, I cannot and will not support an election that disenfranchises the property owners themselves. So tonight, you're going to see me vote in opposition to moving forward, and it's not opposition to the annexation, it's opposition to the process.
Thank you. Any other comments, concerns?
I have just a little bit of historical stuff regarding the first time that annexation was attempted, and I felt at that time that some of the concerns were somewhat legitimate, that Yuba City was not ready, that they didn't convince the citizens that they could provide this service as well, that were being promoted to be provided. And I remember that time was quite volatile, and at that time, I kind of agreed that they weren't ready. Having served eight years at the county and knowing what rural level of services is and is not, I have to agree at this time with Councilman Buckland that the roads, the drainage, many of the needed utilities and infrastructure are absent. There are areas where drainage is just absolutely horrid when you have heavy rains. The city actually makes sure that that's done or recommends ways for citizens to get together to create drainage districts to address those things. The county has no interest in doing any of that. They want to just barely maintain at a rural level of standard, and that was very plainly stated when we did the new general plan update when I was a supervisor. Rural level of services, we're not in the urban business. So the only thing I can say to that is that deterioration of the infrastructure in that area will be more likely than not. I'm not saying they're going to ignore or grossly let things happen, but they're not, their task is not to have urban level of services, curbs, gutters, sweepers, and the types of things in a city, whereas you're typically fined. So coming from my past experience, it's a completely different world of providing of services than what the city typically would have, and people want a little bit nicer services done. At this time, having seen that and not participated very much, but watching it, one of the firm comments I have made throughout the planning of this to happen was, we have to be able to prove that we can provide services and that we can afford to do this and that we will do it. And I 100% believe that we've proven ourselves. In fact, I think that especially this council at this time, or at least over the last three or four years, we have proven ourselves to be faithful. We have proven ourselves to be very strong in raising the standards and using the funds that we have in ways that have raised the standard of living, the quality of life in Yuba City, so much that we have businesses that are saying, we want to come here. We have businesses that are expanding. We have the state and other governments that have funding that are saying, hey, you guys are doing something good there. We want to, you know, stick with you because we think we can trust your word. And yet, this little area here at this time seems to just say, we hate government. And I think that's all it is. We hate government. We don't want to have government. Well, you have government, and I think it's woefully inadequate on your infrastructure and your future there, that it will deteriorate just for the purpose that it is a rural standard in an urban area. It doesn't work. Over time, it just deteriorates. That's a natural order of it. Otherwise, they're going to have to take money from those farm roads out there that they need and put it into your area, and those farmers are not going to like that. And I think they'll have a lot to say. I'm really befuddled as to why the resistance myself. I absolutely have heard no legitimate resistance arguments compared to what was tried in the early 2000s. There is so little there compared to then that I just, I don't understand. It does not make any logical sense as to the resistance that's being put up now. And that's all based on history, all based on fact. So I agree with John on the principle of voting based upon landowner, but I also, I am going to have to support moving forward myself, though. We need something out here so that we can figure out where we're standing with the community.
Anything else? No? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Recommended, A, adopt resolution initiating annexation proceedings for the area known as South Yuba City, calling for a municipal election. B, approve an agreement with Sutter County to consolidate services for the election to be held on Tuesday, June 5, 2018. C, authorize the financial director to make a supplemental appropriations of $40,000 to account number 1710-62701, the city clerk elections, from unallocated fund balance.
I'll second.
Okay. Can we get a roll call, please? Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Buckland?
No.
Councilmember Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Cleveland?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's four to one, so we will move forward with that. Thank you. All right. Next, we have business from city council. We actually have appointments for city of Yuba City boards and commissions. We have our senior commission, Vice Mayor... We have our Senior Commission, Vice Mayor. I guess so. Okay. With the Senior Commission, both Vice Mayor Sean Harris and myself did interviews several weeks ago. And we have now selected and want to consider for appointment three individuals, John Boyer, Pam Epple, and Tanya Thomas. And you have the application packets with you. So we are looking for approval for the three.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to recommend the appointment of the City of Yuba City Board of Commissioners, approve the City Council Screening Committee recommendations, and appointments to the Senior Commission.
Wonderful.
And I'll second that with a comment. This is going to be a great add to this commission. So I really, I'm looking forward to the interaction of this commission, the Senior Commission, especially with these new members. It's going to be a lively group.
Yeah. We're about to find out.
You're going to see. It'll be fun. It's going to be for the best of the city.
So we have a second then. And then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Well, welcome aboard. Okay. Next, we have City Council reports. We'll start with Councilmember Buckland.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just very briefly, CACOG meeting that I attended, I was absent from one of our meetings, our Subuca meeting last week as I was returning from a short vacation down in San Diego where I was looking at the walkability of the downtown area of San Diego. Actually, in two days, walked a little over 25 miles along with my wife. And the disappointing thing there is as we really look at our community and we have complaints about our community and our homeless condition here, I would ask you just to take a short trip and walk around some cities that are truly inundated with a homeless condition that is a true public health safety issue, where sidewalks have to be closed down, where they have to be sanitized because of the lack of restroom facilities or washing facilities within a community. Truly took it to heart as we walked around the downtown area of San Diego, looking at just what they didn't have available. And that was a lot of services. And that was the lack of police officers present on the street, not even making contact. No medical staff that I saw making contact, whether their cities have done that, trying to reach out, especially when they have outbreaks of hepatitis A. There's so much lacking in that. The only police officers I saw out on foot were parking enforcement. And that's a sad statement for a very large city. And I'm not picking on San Diego specifically. It's just that there's very little being done. And homeless are present. They are most, I would tell you, are either drug, currently under the influence of drugs when we would encounter them, or simply had a mental illness. And I'm proud of our community trying to come together with some efforts to try to reach out and help these individuals that we have. And again, the numbers we have are truly manageable, not at the scale that some of the large cities have, and just the overwhelming problems that they have with that. So I'll step back to the CACOG meeting. Attended the CACOG meeting. Part of this was to advance a two-tiered recommendation for funding through Senate Bill 1, which is, yeah, I'm going to use the word gas tax, from those funds. Yuba City placed high on the second tier for the expansion of the Bridge Street project. We don't know that the California Transportation Commission will fully endorse that. But we will make every effort we can to continue to push at the CTC to see if we can't get into this funding round. We are competing against other areas, but there is a sizable amount of money for our region. So we're going to stay actively pursuing that. And the other conversations that I had was if the Bridge Street corridor can't come into play with some of the SB 1 money, that we advance the timeline at 99 and 20 as a Caltrans project with some of those funds for a two-level interchange at that location. So we'll continue to move forward with that. But good interaction with staff. And I think that it will provide, as we provide direction, they're going to provide some feedback and we can move forward with the process. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Cardoza.
Okay. Had quite a few meetings the last couple of weeks. Attended the Regional Housing Authority meeting, the Yuba City Unified School District School Liaison meeting, Planning Commission meeting. And then, the next three meetings, I attended with Councilmember Cleveland, Sutter Beach Flood Control Agency, Yuba City Transit Authority, and the Regional Waste Management Meeting. For community events, I went down to State Capitol with Councilmember Cleveland and Vice Mayor Harris and attended the press conference for the one-year anniversary for AB 1270. This Saturday, I attended the Sixth Annual Both Over Diabetes Fundraiser, Yuba-Sutter Diabetes Fundraiser. They had a great turnout. It was a fun time. And there were no chamber events the last couple of weeks. So got lucky there. Got to have some fun. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. And we've got Councilmember Cleveland.
Thank you very much. Started off with going to the Sutter-Yuba Mosquito Vector District, the one that kind of tries to keep mosquitoes away from you. And then, just want to always remind people, they can call them and ask them to spray their area, especially at any extra events you're going to have outside. And if you call soon enough, at least a week ahead, they'll schedule somebody to come over there and knock down the amount of mosquitoes that would interrupt your event. Also there, we selected a company to do solar on some of their buildings. There were three that claimed to be local. Only one was a truly local. The others were from like, kind of local, they claim. And we did end up using the local vendor. They came out to be the least expensive, only a little by a little bit. And not only that, though, they were providing a system that was much more maintainable, easier, in my opinion, to keep track of each individual panel. To where one panel would go, they would know exactly which one was going bad, rather than having all grouped onto one big reader and you'd never find it unless you called somebody special out to come and try to find it. Well, this one here, you know, within minutes, you can have a phone call made to somebody to come out and take care of it. Let's see here. I went to, as I said, Sutter Beach Flood Control Meeting. You saw the report. There was a lot of efforts going on there, a lot of expenditure of time and effort in Washington, DC to make sure that our area is remembered. We are well-known throughout the United States for this project and its success and its innovative approaches to getting funding and developing the project itself. So we are being watched. So that is a couple of plus points for us to be provided more funding. Gil Sizer Drainage was canceled. I did attend the Yuba-Sutter Transit. There's a lot of changes going on, or changes that we're going to be trying to do at Yuba-Sutter Transit regarding coming into the 21st century on keeping track of buses, keeping track of the fundings that would come in. We already are going to a card instead of paying. And I mean, that is working out very well. All over the world, they're doing that. And so we're finally getting caught up. We're looking at a couple of changes, perhaps, in the locations of the busiest transit bus stops to take the grief away from the businesses of the people being there and make it a little nicer area for some of the businesses. So we're looking into some future changes that will definitely be of good changes. Then Regional Waste Management Authority, moving forward with just all the processes and providing waste services. And this week, actually, I went and visited my grandkids in Florida for a real quick visit. So I wasn't here this weekend to go to any of the weekend events. Other than that, looking forward to this next week.
Thank you. Now we have Vice Mayor Harris.
I too took advantage of the fact that Gil Sizer was canceled, as were a few of the other meetings that I normally attend. And was in town, were whopping one day the last 14. Spent some time in Texas with my grandkids. During that one day, though, we, as was stated by Councilman Cardoza, was honored to represent the city, speaking a little bit on the north steps of the Capitol in support of Senator, excuse me, Assemblyman Gallagher and his and many other people's efforts to get AB 1270 on the governor's desk, which is going to be a very good piece of legislation where the most striking thing to me was dams were required to be inspected every now and then, literally in writing. Not anymore. It'll be annual. And some requirements and the details and the processes and procedures that are required to go through in order for it to officially count as an inspection have been refined tremendously well, in my opinion. And let's hope that we see some positive results. It can only be a good thing. So again, as stated, I applaud their efforts and I'm looking forward to some good things out of that, some positive change, coming from that very close call we had as a community. And it was literally on the one-year anniversary of the wonderful evacuation I'll never forget. Also, some talk, it'll be in a couple weeks, but with military liaison folks that I'm involved with. We're planning a trip to San Antonio to get a quick whirlwind tour of the base out there and some details on the Air Force and the Air Force's mission. And we're able to get, actually witnessed a graduation of the graduating, I guess they call it boot camp in the Air Force class. And rumor has it, I may take advantage of being in Texas and go see my grandkids while I'm there, too. But other than that, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I guess we were all away pretty much these last two weeks. I, from the last City Council meeting, took off to Toray, Japan, and just returned yesterday. So I'm a little jet-lagged and getting over a cold. Yeah. But the trip was absolutely phenomenal. We had 16 students with us from here. We had our Yuba City Unified School District representatives with us as well. And talk about cultural and traditional experiences and living with host families there, their everyday life. The students attend school there. We actually attended school for a day to see how they hold their classes. And we were absolutely fascinated by some of the classes they actually take and some of the things that the students do. Toray was absolutely phenomenal in the sense, not only just the generosity, but the cleanliness of the entire city and the schools. The campuses were shiny, including the bathrooms. So imagine little kids and walking on campus and everything is absolutely shiny, pristine. And what we learned, yeah, what we learned is it's not janitorial work that's taking care of the campuses. It's actually the students themselves. So after their lunch period, the students actually have a cleaning session. And they are cleaning the urinals, the toilets, the floors. And it's something that they do all together. We saw pictures. They're laughing, they're having a good time. They actually take ownership of their school, which is absolutely phenomenal. Something else that we witnessed was in the morning, as we're driving by, there was an elementary school and there were a line of kids walking. And so they all walked to school or biked to school. They're walking and we get to the gates of the school and there's two of the school, you know, teachers from the campus. But they were greeting every single student as they came to the gate. And it was acknowledging every single student that you're worthy. You are someone. And they're literally saying hello to each and every single one, which was fascinating because there were a lot of students. The other part was that they, in the lighter part, and they do this during their entire school year, is there's coursework on mannerisms, just saying thank you and being polite and just being a part of their everyday life, which was just absolutely fascinating because we see some of the trends that we see just here. And we were just fascinated by the generosity, from kids to elders, just absolutely, just the polite mannerisms of everyone. They opened their homes and catered to us and welcomed us to everything. Terrell and I, we were in the same home and our host was giving us coffee and tea in our rooms in the morning. So we came back a little spoiled. So now we're wondering, okay, where's our coffee? Where's our tea? But just the culture. We got to wear the kimonos. We went to some events and that was absolutely wonderful. And we also had a special meeting held by the council or assembly, is what they call it, and talk about women's concerns and women's civic engagement and how do we do it here versus how they do it there. So we learned a lot. At the same time, we were able to engage in a very in-depth conversation to share our experiences and how we can engage women more in the conversation and be more at the table in their policy and decision-making. So fascinating, fascinating trip. And I look forward to seeing other students join during this program in the future, too. So it's a great program. But anyway, that's what I did. So we're back and recovering. So with that, if there's not anything else, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:30 tonight.